Lord, we do thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for the blessings of life you've given us, Lord. Thank you for letting us come tonight to represent our city, Lord. And I pray that you'd help us make decisions that's pleasing to tell you what's best for our town and our people. And Father, we just pray, Lord, that you just be with us, just give us wisdom, knowledge, courage, strength, and ability to be all you'd have us to be in the positions that we have in Christ, and I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all of our guests out tonight.
Both of them?
Yeah. All right, we'll get the meeting started with a motion to call the meeting to order.
So, Moon?
Don?
Second.
Kevin? All in favor? Item number two, need a motion to cover only what's on the agenda. Eugene?
Second.
Don? All in favor? Uh, I think y'all tabled the minutes at the last meeting, so Carlo, I'll ask you to read the minutes, uh, four twenty seven.
The Hackleburg Town Council made a regular session on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty P. M. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow and to call the meeting to, well, hold on, let me start again, got crazy. The Hackleburg Town Council made a regular session on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty P. M. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow. Councilmember Don Barlow led everyone in prayer and a pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn addressed the council and guests. He wanted everyone to take a minute to remember all the people lost or injured injured on this day nine years ago in the horrible F five tornado that was, that struck our town. Mayor Coburn stated that with the quarantine in place, we were unable to have a ceremony of remembrance, but hopefully next year, we will be able to. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor asked the clerks to read the minutes from the March nine, twenty twenty meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Marba and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, five As and one abstain. The mayor asked the clerks to read the minutes from the March thirtieth, twenty twenty meet, special meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Lally to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no As, all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement for them to review. After looking over, a motion was made by Councilmember Marba and was seconded by Councilmember Lally to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to look over. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Marba to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. Marion County District Attorney Scott Slatton was in attendance and wanted to speak to the mayor and council. He stated that the county was in need of a female domestic violence investigator and that it takes a very special person to do this job. With the number of cases that we have in Marion and Winston Counties, it's very difficult for the one investigator we currently have. He proposed a plan for financial help from the cities that make up these two counties. District Attorney Slatton asked for a one-year pledge of twenty-five hundred dollars to help with hiring. He has someone in mind to hire for this position. Her name is Sylvia Mothershed, and she is highly qualified for the job. D. A. Slatton also stated that eight out of eleven cities have come on board with the plan. Councilmember Marbit stated that he was in favor of this because of his experience with female prisoners being a correctional officer. Assistant Chief David Crittenen also spoke in favor of hiring a female for this position. Hackleburg citizen Will Gerald, who was in attendance, offered to pay half of the salary in order to get a female investigator. Mayor Coburn thanked him, but assured him that it wouldn't be necessary. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and was seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to pledge twenty-five hundred dollars to the district attorney's office in order to hire a female investigator. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. Chief Oot submitted three items needed for the police department to purchase. Replacement batteries for the tasers, heavy-duty belt clip holsters for the phones, and ammunition. The combined cost would be less than five hundred dollars. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Lally to allow for the PD to purchase these items. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor and council discussed hiring a full-time police officer. Only two applicants were turned in, neither were A post-certified. We have a new post, uh, part-time officer that is interested in the job. His name is Steve Glover and is A post-certified. He would be willing to sign a contract with the twenty-five hundred dollar signing bonus. There were concerns about him leaving and the need to modify the contract to state if he was hired away, the hiring entity would have to pay our town back for the bonus. A motion was made by Councilmember Marba and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to hire Steve Glover with the modifications to the contract. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor addressed the council concerning the hiring of street department employees. There were only four applications received and considered for the job opening. Therefore, the mayor made the choice to hire Shane Hudson to the full-time opening and hire Hunter Hudson for a part-time position of patching potholes. He made this choice because we were not able to meet due to the COVID nineteen outbreak. The mayor and council discussed opening the swimming pool for the summer. Because of the pandemic, Councilmember Don Barlow suggested not opening this year and use this time for needed repairs to the pool. It was decided to discuss further at the next meeting. The park was discussed. The new equipment is being put together and they're getting ready to install. The equipment that is being taken down is being installed at the Wigginton Park. The mayor and council discussed a raise for Assistant Police Chief David Crittenen. The mayor provoked, proposed to raise him one dollar per hour. This would bring him to fifteen fifty per hour. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to give Officer Crittenen this raise. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The gravel and grade list was discussed. This list includes the following. John Pate, Rodney Williams, and Patricia Criddle. A motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Don Barlow to gravel and grade said drops. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Marba to adjourn.
All right, y'all heard the reading of the minutes. Any questions or comments? If you've been over to the park, they've got the park equipment up. It looks really good. I've heard a lot of, a lot of compliments on it. And, uh, they've got all the equipment moved down to the Wigginton Park and got it up and heard a lot of good things from that. People are really excited.
That's good stuff right there.
Tony went home sick today is why he's not here, but he will bring the contract for Steve Glover at our next council meeting.
Wonder if the police gasket, what they needed, the taser stuff?
I think so. I think that's the man.
Ordered all that?
All right, anything else? Need a motion to accept the minutes of four twenty seven?
Motion.
Don?
Second.
Kevin? All in favor? All right, read the minutes. Carla, if you don't mind, from five eleven.
The Hackleburg Town Council made a regular session on May eleventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty P. M. Mayor Coburn was out of town, but was linked into the meeting by cellphone. In his absence, Mayor Pro Tem Don Barlow asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lally made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow. Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem Don Barlow led everyone in prayer, then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Pro Tem Don Barlow stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Barlow and seconded by Councilmember Lally to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The Mayor Pro Tem asked that we table the reading of the minutes for the twenty, April twenty seventh meeting until the next scheduled meeting. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to table until the next meeting. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the council with a check register for them to look over. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero three was presented to be passed. This resolution would allow NACOG to administer CDBG project S M dash C M dash P F dash nineteen dash oh four seven. A motion was made by Councilmember Lally and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to pass said resolution. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. The mayor and council discussed opening the gym at the rec center. After some discussion, a motion was made by Kevin Barlow and seconded by Councilmember Lally not to open the gym at this time. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. Mayor and council discussed fourth of July. Everyone in attendance was in agreement to try to have the fireworks show and some things for the kids to do. Mayor Pro Tem Don Barlow decided it would be best to talk more about this at the next meeting. The mayor and council discussed opening the swimming pool for the summer. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, Councilmember Lally made a motion not to open the pool this summer. Councilmember Kevin Barlow seconded the motion. This would be a good time to do some much-needed repairs at the pool. Voting was as follows, all As, no Nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Barlow and seconded by Councilmember Lally to adjourn.
All right, y'all heard the reading of the minutes for five eleven. Need a motion to, are there any comments or questions? All right, need a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Good to get them two involved, don't they? All in favor? Yeah, neither way, y'all. All right.
That's why they got put down there.
Yeah, they didn't start coming.
That's trouble making.
That's right.
All right, item number five, uh, financial statement. Everybody should have one.
This is through April, so we'll be getting a, a Mason. Being it's the twenty-sixth of the month, we're flying behind.
We got some house bill, two gas checks.
It's off that, uh, six cent.
Oh.
The new tax, the government.
But we'd passed that ten cent and they just give us.
Well, it will be ten cents, but six right now.
So they actually give us six thousand dollars?
Well, it collects in that account.
If you'll notice, there's a gas and then there's a diesel.
Oh, oh, yeah, diesel. I didn't see that. We don't get that.
I'm gonna combine those two, cause our auditor warned me to, there's no use in having two.
You have to show a use for them. You can't just take them out, just like that other.
That's the gas same way, eh?
Yeah.
Well, we can show that on our roads, can't we?
Yep. Gas being a little bit cheaper, it it's kind of helped
Yeah.
keep that money down a little. Everybody good on the financial statement? Need a motion to accept it?
Motion.
Darren? Second?
Second.
Kevin? All in favor? All right, item six, pay the bills. So we ain't got no choice, do we?
No. Either that or they closed everything down for us.
Eugene made a motion, second? Darren? Now they woke up. All in favor? All right, new business. Item number one, last meeting, y'all, uh, passed a resolution through the, for the NACOG. We need to pass another resolution, twenty twenty dash zero zero one dash zero one supplemental agreement, uh, for a construction agreement without it. So I need a motion, pass that resolution.
Motion passed as resolution.
Don? Second? Eugene, all in favor? All right, item number two, um, Thursday, I, I don't know if any of y'all will be around or not, but we're gonna have a pre-bid meeting here at the City Hall at two o'clock. Um, if any of y'all's around, I know Don, you'll probably be around, come to it. If y'all are off work, y'all are welcome to come. When I talked to them last week, they had three bidders that, uh, was on the plant holders list. If everything goes right, the engineers think we'll be able to start early to mid-July paving, so. Maybe everything will go like we want it to. Yeah, Union Hill Cemetery Road, that, that'll be the one through CDBG funds.
Does that come out of where? That cemetery and that comes out of Fairview?
Chalk Mine Road.
That Fairview over there at Chalk Mine, right?
Yeah.
So, and that's a dandy.
It is.
It's that neat.
They're gonna, they're gonna, the county's gonna use chip cell on their part of it.
It's city and then it turns into county and it goes back to city.
So we got each, each end to the top of the hill each way.
But they had to do something or they wouldn't fund it. They won't just fund a half a road
Yeah.
stop and pick back up.
In bad shape.
I wish they would have, but they said they couldn't afford it.
Yeah, they ought to make that road good. That, that would make that road in good shape.
But I wouldn't. On this, uh, pre-bid meeting, I mean, it, it just, just to clarify any questions that the bidders have on it, contractors and go over the scope of the work and make sure we're all, they're all bidding on the same thing.
Bid meeting just for this project here?
Yeah, the bid meeting will be Thursday.
Yeah, it's, it's, oh.
Yes.
It's, oh, table.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do it all at one time. They're putting it all together for more interest in the contractors bidding on it. Get a better.
It's just this one road, correct?
I, I don't, I don't know what part of this get in here.
It was just a copy of that supplemental, it's the.
No, you got Second Street West, Second Street East, County Road one twenty-one, Hill Road, Angle Road, Union Hill Cemetery Road. It should be on that front page.
Where's Second Street, that east of where it is?
It's right here in town. Comes out nearly right in front of Dubbs, right there. That's west. Comes about, you know where Ben Braden?
Yeah, goes right by Heath House.
That road that's.
That's one of the roads that's supposed to been done.
And it goes down to where the Southernlands live.
Nobody didn't hear that, did they?
No.
That's one of the roads, supposed to been done with torn out of mine.
And then Hill Road and Angle Road.
Is that bad though?
Huh?
Is it that bad?
Oh, yeah, they're, it's barely a road.
Well, that's where the money's supposed to been spent, though.
Yeah, all that water under the bridge, I mean, this guy was supposed to be.
No, the, the road's gone nearly. I mean, they're, we'll have to do a little bit of work to it before they can even lay asphalt on it.
I want us to be able to clip the shoulders and widen them roads a little bit. When you got a fourteen-foot road and traffic like crazy on them, that's bad.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get with the county and see if they'll help us on clipping the shoulders and I think on one of the, on the Chalk Mine Road end of Union Hill Cemetery Road, the engineer wants us to dig a little bit of that out and put rock in, which is cheaper for us to do it than to have them do it, so. Um, Thursday, they wanna go look at that too, after the meeting. So maybe we can get some road improvements for too long. So anyway, that, unless y'all have any questions, that'll bring y'all up to date on where we're at. All right, item number three, discuss the fourth of July. I think we'd talked about moving everything uptown since we're not gonna be using the pool. And, um, got an email from the league and the State Farm Marshal and, uh, the director of the state public health. You have to get a permit. If you're, if you're hosting a fireworks show, they have to issue you a permit now to be able to do that. So we have to send them in, like a little plan, what we're gonna do. And, uh, you know, they, kind of like, are people gonna stay in their car? Are they gonna get out? Just, you know, they want them to be social distanced and would like to see police on patrol and, you know. Um, I think we'll be fine. I think people handled theirsself pretty well around here, so.
Now, will that mean that we probably won't do music or anything like that?
Um, I don't, I don't see where it would affect music. I've got to find out about the bouncy houses, because you got so many kids using the same stuff over and over. But, um, oh, that, that's one of the things that I'd ask about. But I, I think the music and the fireworks show, we, we should be okay. Y'all got any comments on that?
What about, uh, selling hamburgers and stuff?
That is something else we gotta find out about. I know the restaurants will be open in town, but if the fire department is gonna sell anything, well.
Need to give them an answer.
Yeah, I told Chad to get with, uh, Steve and find out what they need to do to get a permit to be able to do that. Cause I know they're gonna be a little bit stricter on them than they normally would be.
Yep, now they have a snow cone machine that they were gonna use and they talked about doing homemade ice cream and maybe they can do some of that.
Which that, that actually would be the rescue squad, not the fire department, but, uh, but anyway, that's where we're at. Anybody else? Eugene, you get anything on that? Darren? All right? All right, item number four, uh, I've had several calls about when we're gonna rent the senior building out again. I don't think we've talked about renting it any, so totally will have to talk about it in a council meeting and see where we're at with it and what y'all wanna do. I don't think the seniors will go back to using it for a while, probably.
I still wish we could, if they're gonna, and I'd like to rent it to people that wants it, but they need to clean it up and after, we need somebody to spray it down with disinfectant. We need the germs killed out of there.
Somebody's asking me about, did they used to play music over there on Monday nights or Friday nights or something? They just wanna kind of get back to doing that, but I don't know what to deal with, if it, if it's rented or.
They came to us one time and we kind of went along with them, but we didn't hear nothing else from them.
Yeah. But if there gonna be a gathering, I'm, uh, Don said that it's about gotta be fumigated or
Yeah.
it's gotta be disinfected after use, so there gonna be a cost to that somehow, I don't know.
We need, we need to get a process on it.
Stuff for cleaning game, uh,
Yeah.
you know?
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with renting it at all.
I don't either.
I don't either.
Carla, if you wanna look in. To see what it would cost to have a company come in. And i- if it ain't too much, we might pass that on to the rental.
Yeah.
Price and just, you know, each time they get finished, yeah. And if it is too much, we. Um.
On the left, on my heels up there. Serve probably.
They do it, I know, but I, I think they like to do a contract if they do it, yeah. What is it, fifty or a hundred?
A hundred.
Hundred.
Yeah, they probably, we were served pros high.
So, y'all. Sent us for.
Uniformed, don't you?
Yeah. Well, Carla, you, you just find out tomorrow if you don't care, make some calls and uh. Just see what kind of uh, price range you get in and. You know, if we can, we can, if we can't, we can't. And what makes that more important? I mean, then people are gonna be eating there and using the, you know. Utensils and kitchen and all that. We're delivering meals, yeah. We are delivering two weeks at a time.
Are they prepared over there or they buy them?
No, they're brought in.
I ain't eaten since they quit doing that. I'm still hungry.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I hadn't ate a meal since I quit going out there, so I wish they'd bring one by my house.
They will. They will, they, they picked up Coach Ray.
Oh, yeah, he made sure he got his. He ain't got the money, I do though.
Alright, so item number four, we're gonna, no, he can't touch you. Item number four, Carla, you're gonna check on that tomorrow and we'll table that. Alright, item number five, um. When we had these floors in here stripped and waxed. The gentleman that done it, he said it's gonna be a lot easier to take care of them and they're gonna hold up better if we do them twice a year. And they're really due to be done again. And the ones that clean the senior building, they say they're to the point, they can't mop them up. I mean, they're, they're so bad gone. So, uh, I'd like to see us get a price on stripping. The uh, senior building. And then whatever he's gotta do in here, if he's gonna strip it again or if he just comes back in and.
Is that worm?
Uh, berry, yeah, yeah.
Will he do it?
Yeah, oh yeah, he, he's. Uh.
He.
I didn't, I wa- I wasn't gonna call it until we talked about it.
Outside my house, but somebody told me that he said he wasn't going out of his house till this stuff was over with.
He may be in there a while. That's who I was gonna get, you know, he done it last time, but uh. You know, if he don't want to, we'll talk to smaller people and whatever, but. The senior building needs it bad, especially while they're not in there and be easy to get to.
Well, let's do it.
I think we paid about nine hundred, wasn't it?
Nine seventy-five.
For the city hall. Last time we done it, so the senior building shouldn't be half of that. So, if we're under fifteen hundred, are y'all good with us going ahead and?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Alright, made a motion.
Yeah, motion.
Don, second.
Yep.
Eugene. All in favor? Alright, item number six, discuss opening the gym. I know y'all talked about it last meeting. Um, then again, you know, we get a lot of calls, people wanting to know when we're gonna open, if we're gonna open. Um. I think the high schools, they're, they're gonna start back June eighth, are they not?
That's their plan.
In my opinion, I think if they're, if they're gathering at school. I mean, we, we oughta just coincide with them and. Have a tentative opening date for June the eighth.
I just ain't forward to it like it is.
Hamilton helps this morning that they've canceled all their.
Yep.
Summer programs for, here at the Red Center.
Well, you talking about baseball and?
Baseball.
Yeah, we're, I, I ain't talking about any league, I'm just about opening.
People inside to play basketball, I'm getting.
They won't even let them enter the gym.
I don't, I don't think they will, so that's just something to think about.
Well. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't blame them, they, they gotta do what they gotta do and I don't. I'm not gonna judge any town for what they do or don't do, but. You know, we've had a lot of kids that have had nothing to do really since spring and, you know, they're eager to be able to do something. Of course, we wanna look out for their safety, but um.
I think they're a little more tougher.
Yeah.
To, they're some of the ones that's, are less likely.
Yeah.
To catch this virus.
Their immune system is gonna be a lot better.
And again, if you got one of them got it and they pitch the people up here and they all get it and go down the white trail, there you go.
We'd, we'd have to set a limit on, and.
I mean. You'd have to set a limit on how many to go in there.
Yeah, at one time, yeah.
Have a supervisor in there all the time.
My kid, and them kids, I think they're gonna be too privy to that six-foot stuff.
Well.
But.
It's hard to play basketball and stay six foot four.
It is, but I mean, even in, even if they got to go in and shoot. Yeah, just get back behind the three-point line and make seven, yeah. But even, you know, if we told them, look, you can't play games right now, if you don't have anything to do, if y'all wanna go in and shoot, you can. If y'all mess it up, you know, we'll have to close it. But um. Yeah, it, it. And I, you know, I know it's a real thing.
Yeah.
But I hate to see fear control everything we do, and right now, that's what's happening.
Yeah, fear's better than death.
Well, common sense ain't going. To me, if you can go to Walmart, there's five hundred people in there and it's okay to do that, or you can go to Lowe's, you can go to Home Depot and get work.
You can put a mask on to protect yourself.
But they're not.
Well, I'm not talking to them for much, you, you don't like to walk up there without a mask though.
I'm, I'm still wearing, where they live.
Don always says, Kevin about praying, that's why we put here to make the decisions that protects the community. Now, Trump didn't shut the nation down and the economy go under, you know, we think sitting here jockeying back for about opening the gym.
I'm still wearing that mask that you give, give us.
So, the school's opening up, what on the eight?
Uh, football, they're gonna start, yeah.
Normally limited though, limited.
Ten at a time.
Yeah, that's gotta be the distance and everything.
But if one out of ten, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can limit it to ten.
No contact.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with it.
I just think we need to, I think we need to.
We could make them wear masks if, you, you know, but, but they're warm. Just like. And I didn't see harming anybody with masks.
Yeah. I don't, I don't.
I'm with y'all, other than I'm not gonna vote for it.
The only reason I've, I, 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 from the stats I'm seeing, kids are not. You know, not nothing like, the older people, anybody with underlying health issues, two top cat doors. And kids are down at the bottom.
Any goals at the park down there? Basketball.
We have down at the.
We've got one at the tennis court, but, you know, it's not like playing.
You know, Colin Taylor was wanting to put some in over.
And she said that they contour and put some up down at the park.
Well, I'm, I'm more concerned about, hey, we can go to the gym tonight, it don't matter if it's raining. Windy, whatever, you know? If they're gonna be playing at the park and we on the park, what's the difference? I mean.
It's outside, and you ain't letting them in.
When, when, when are we gonna start letting them in though? I mean, I, I just. I hate that they dictate.
In my opinion, next year.
I'm not knowing.
What's gonna be different?
We'll have to look at it then. We might not can even start next year, but I'm not for starting it the way it is now.
Well, if I was, Darren's for it, he made a motion, motion will pass thirty-two, I mean, I'm not being hosed about it.
We do need to.
We hadn't heard anything from you. Darren, what do you think?
Well, I go back to what I hear from parents and people in the communities, the kids never have nothing to do and I mean, honestly, they're here, there, they're everywhere, so. I don't see too many understanding, I only be in quarantine or things like that, so I'd rather still play basketball and we'd be getting in trouble.
I mean, we gotta be smart about it, you know, we gotta keep an eye on them and.
Get one of them make the motion over to take it safely.
Make a motion to let them play. I mean, as long as they don't come back on the town, that's fine, I mean.
Oh, they're gonna come back on the town, I don't, you can't be related to some liability, so this is.
You better have somebody in there.
Anytime we have it open to the public, we have to have somebody.
And so you don't wanna be on the town, that's nine hundred people getting that dog up here playing basketball. Don't like it, ain't gonna be on the town. Don't like the CDC ain't gonna be on, you like fleas on the dog.
There are other things else, I was wondering.
They ain't everything, why not, that's one case for case.
Same motion.
I mean, I.
He did make a motion.
You just gotta set the date.
Darren, you make a motion for June eighth, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we need to decide how many nights a week.
Okay, second.
I'll second. That's Lee's Dylan right there.
Yes. Alright, Darren made a motion, Kevin second, it's all in favor. Uh, all opposed. Alright, motion passes, gym will open June the eighth. Alright, now we need to set a schedule. Yeah, wanna start out two nights a week and see how it goes and. We have interest, we'll. And they're abiding by what they need to do and.
Make sure they're going by the guidelines.
Yeah, Tuesday and Thursday, six to nine. You good with you?
I'm good with that. It's gonna say a what-if, you know, you what-if at today, but. You know. Can we, let's say, uh. If we're the only gym open in the countryside, everybody and their brother might be coming from every little old town around here, they could fill, fill up, so. Can we, if we had to, if it wouldn't. Doing right, can we not?
Yeah.
Shut it down or?
We, we can limit the capacity to ten. No more than ten people in that gym at one time.
Yeah.
And that would eliminate that. And we can set a stipulation, Hackleburg kids have first.
Deb's on it.
Yeah. I mean, their moms and dads paid for it.
That can happen in a hurry.
Yeah, yeah, good.
What about? The ten? They can't stay in there the whole three hours or will they?
The capacity, well, no, if we got some waiting, I mean.
They'll have to.
We'll have to go over whatever, who we got running it to, you know, they can rotate it out, they can do whatever, but.
Manage it.
Yeah. You can't get the same ten in there every night and let them stay in there the whole time. And that may not be an issue, you know?
We just gotta go over whoever is in charge.
Right.
Give them instructions that they gotta follow, and then they'll go with that, and so then, as long as we go, do it, two days, start it out two days a week.
Right.
Something else we really need to do is that con- contour, and like Eugene said, put them up over there. And we can post, hey, there's goals over there too.
Yeah.
You can go over there in the open air.
Well, I, I've seen them playing out at the tennis court. Already.
Is that dinner by the pool?
Yeah.
But didn't contour want to do that?
Well, they wanted to do something, I don't know if they specifically.
But then we, since all of this happened, we need to contact.
They were talking about it right before.
Yeah.
The coronavirus hit, so.
And give people different options.
Yeah.
I might add to that, to, uh, the goals being put up down there, I went from here to Hamilton and met with Mike Shaw and his assistant. This evening. And he, and he's put that on his assistant to draw up a T-ball field over there for us. We, we talked about this when we first started, we never did do nothing.
Started on it and didn't.
And then they're gonna draw it up and help us to, to build that. So, that'll make that look nice right there on that, on that part, and if we had basketball goals over there too, that'll just add to our park. Everything we put over there will be a plus for, for our park.
We think on the fence and we may be able to get it donated. So, hopefully.
And they can draw it out and tell us exactly how big it's gotta be and everything.
Yeah, shoot it and let's get the grade, right?
Yeah, and the grade and everything. I didn't wanna cut it down, cause that walking track's right there. So, if we could build it up, on that hill, build it up, just leave it like it is up top.
Yeah, T-ball pit ain't gotta be big at all.
They could go over and play without waiting on the big kids in, they'd have their own field.
Yeah. Alright, Carla, what have you got down as a motion?
I have a motion made by Darren and seconded by Kevin to open up the gym on June eighth. Uh, allowing ten persons at a time. And if there's more waiting, to rotate them in and out. Uh, Hackleburg kids first in. And this is two times a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to nine.
Right. That what y'all got? What you had, Darren?
Okay, what about? Now, Eli did have the gym, is that?
Yeah, we'll talk to him first, if he wants it, to keep doing it, then. We'll allow him to, if not, we'll get somebody else to do.
We ain't got no say-so in it, Mayor, but I, if I was y'all, I would make a list of everybody that comes in every night.
Yeah, we can have a sign-in list and find out who's coming in, who's, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah. If something were to happen, you know, who was there every night and who wasn't?
Who's exposed.
Who's exposed and who wasn't and that type, yes.
Yeah, know who, who'd been there. Alright, item number seven, approve order and a vest for David Crittenden. He didn't have one, so, uh. Told Carla to go ahead and let him order it and pay for it out of the police fund. So, I think you've already done that or he done it, one, haven't you?
Uh, he has ordered it for it. He had, uh, actually got fitted for it today. And they take like six weeks to come in, so that's the reason we went ahead and.
If you need a motion, I'll make a motion to go ahead and buy that.
Don, second. Darren? All in favor? Alright, item number eight. And I, I've got discussed graduation, but. You know, the seniors this year. A lot of them lost a lot of their senior year, you know, you wait your whole life to become a senior and, um. Whether you're an athlete or student, band, whatever you're into, but.
Everybody lost.
Yeah, and it looked like for a long time, they weren't even gonna get to graduate. So, I think every school in the county graduated, didn't they, at a graduation? So, I just wanna congratulate them and, uh. So I just wanna congratulate them and uh, you know, I know it's been a tough year on them. Probably when they were in third, fourth grade, you know, they went through the tornadoes and the trailer of schools and. So they this group, they've had a pretty tough career and. Just wanted to congratulate them on getting getting through and getting to graduate. Brings us around to gravel and grade. Donnie Hill needs, let's say, two loads, if you're gonna get one and a half, you might as well get two. Just need a motion to get Donnie Hill, is that for the restaurant?
I'm assuming so, maybe just tainted.
Yeah, I think it is. Alright, need a motion.
Make the motion.
Kevin. Second.
Second.
Done. All in favor? Alright, need a motion to adjourn. Eugene. Second. Darren. Darren was waiting on one of y'all too. Alright, proceed, everybody been here.